So we have a quorum. Let's see. So may I please have a motion? For approval of minutes? So did everyone read the last meeting's minutes? If there's no corrections, then we'll have the minute stand as approved.
Well, I'm.
I know that we approved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Minutes have been approved. So in discussion, we need a motion for discussion of scheduling of future P and Z meetings. And I knew that we discussed scheduling of future P and Z meetings. Need a second?
I'll second.
I'll be second. Let's see what we've got here. So the. Motion has been second. And that's up for debate. So we can go ahead and debate the motion. So the P and Z scheduling, actually, forgive me, I'll be right back. I don't know. I don't know quite if you've gotten a copy or Jessica sent you a copy by email. But I do apologize, but we are going to send you a copy of the schedule. And in the scheduling, we have on a monthly basis, it gives us the date of the meeting. The date that the newspaper posting occurs, when the letters are due. And then what date the P and Z packets are sent out. So we have one for August 23rd, September 27th, October 25th, November 22nd, and December 27th. And then 2022, it's the 24th of January, the 28th of February, and then the 28th of March. And then I can go ahead, basically 15 days prior to newspaper notice Tuesday before noon for the Thursday newspaper. You'll get all this information. 10 days prior to letters have been sent out to notify neighbors to 100 foot radius. And then inform members of the P and Z 72 hours with packing agenda information. So part of this is, I'm also going to write in for workshops. But those will come up in discussion items, and I think that we should schedule those, that we should just put those on agendas. We'll send out information on certain types of workshops that we want to do for the next fiscal year and part of this year as well. So does anyone have any comments or discussion on the new P and Z hours and dates?
So that's once a month and the last Monday is that continued pattern?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, and Jessica, the permit tech, she's actually secretary for P and Z as well. She's going to send out all the information. So if there's any questions or if we need to amend this, we can always bring it up for another discussion item on the agenda.
That continues to work for me, I think.
Okay.
And is the time still going to be in the evening, 5:30 to 7?
5:30 to 7.
Okay, because I understand they're moving the city council meeting to midday?
I don't, I don't know if that passed or not.
Okay.
No, it didn't pass.
Okay, thank you. The question is on the motion to approve the schedule for future P and Z meetings. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Okay, silence is all. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. The building services department will send out all new schedule and briefs via email to all members of planning and zoning in regards to the P and Z schedule. Next item up for discussion. Is. At the very last, discuss Rick Stevens' position for P and Z. I need a motion for discussion for Rick Stevens for P and Z.
Motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, the motion, the motion for discussion for Rick Stevens for P and Z, we'll go ahead and go into the debate. So I believe that Chris Rodriguez, council member Rodriguez, has recommended Rick Stevens for P and Z at large. If you want to have a discussion about this, remember that if you do recommend anyone, we also have a discussion for Deborah Durden and Lucy Escavado. So whoever is recommended, it'll go back to city council for approval. Because it'll be required that city council approves their recommendation.
So, so I'm not following. There, there are three people under consideration for the at-large position.
There is. Yeah, and the way, the way I'm doing it right now is a little different during the discussion items itself. We're going to go through each one of the discussions and we're going to get a motion, and then we're going to actually vote. So we'll, we'll take Rick Stevens, just like we did with the P and Z scheduling. So we'll go through the debate, and then we'll do the voting, and then we'll send that through. And then we'll go, after that, we'll go straight into public hearing.
But David, are, are the three mutually exclusive, or are we looking at three new members?
Well, we have one position at large available. Wrong's actually is leaving place one or position one, and then we're also two as vacancies. So right now, these three positions that are up for debate or discussion are, is the at-large position. They're not actually award position. Because the, the members who, the people who are actually at large right now, the wards are already taken for their seat. So they're, they're, that's why they're coming through at the at-large. Now, the other thing to remember too is, is that city council has to approve the chairperson. And then the members of the commission can actually vote on the vice chair. So we need to also bring that back to council to determine who would want to be the chair for P and Z. And then we need to bring up another discussion item in the future as far as who wants to vice chair. Because we vote, the P and Z members actually vote on the vice.
So is this position open to anybody, the at-large position? I mean, is someone just getting appointed, or do other people have, you know, a chance to come in here and say, hey, I want to be at large too?
Yeah, the two at-large positions, the only requirements for that is that you have to be a citizen of Alpine. You have to be able to vote, and it doesn't matter which ward you're in. So anyone could apply for the at-large position.
So is this something that's out there in the public eye that people come in and say something, or is just this, all of a sudden, we're appointing somebody at large without anybody else coming in wanting to do it?
Well, whoever applies, so.
Well, is it been?
And also too, technically, the council member has to basically. Back that member or back that person and recommend it, recommend that person for the P and Z.
Well, my, my point is, is, is this open to the public? Why, do people know about this? Has we advertised it anything that people can do this, or?
I don't know that, I don't know if they have previously in the past.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not privy to this, most of this information right now either, so I'm just wondering, why isn't it out there?
Well, I have a question. Okay, so I mean, maybe this may answer it. So on the website, there shows a vacancy in Ward 2. And at-large, but we are only talking about the at-large position.
Correct.
That, that's correct.
Correct.
Can I, I have a question, David? David, can you hear me?
Okay, who's speaking?
This is, this is Councilor Rodri.
Okay, I can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I have a question. I had. On my ward, did Mr. Pierce actually resign?
Are you still there?
I think she's, she's breaking up.
Hey, I think you're.
Can you hear me?
I think you're breaking up.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, I was wanting to know, actually, did Mr. Pierce actually resign?
Oh, that, that I don't know. I don't, I believe he did.
So I can answer that. I received an email. I had sent out an invitation for P and Z and he told me.
I thought I just heard someone say there was a.
He would no longer be attending P and Z meetings. So to me, yes, that, that would be a resignation.
Thank you for clarifying that, you know. So if basically a city council member. Actually recommends someone for the at-large position, the at-large position, if. P and Z recommends that person as well, then it goes back to city council for confirmation for the appointment at large. So right, today, right now, we have three people who are wanting the at-large position. Rick Stevens, Deborah Durden, and Lucy Escavado.
And so, yeah.
Yeah, so the question, I mean, if there's, if there's no debate, then the question is on the motion to recommend Rick Stevens for at-large position on planning and zoning. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor, those opposed say no.
No.
I didn't speak up real quick there, David, but I guess my question is, we have three applications in one position?
We do.
So if we pick Rick, the other two don't get picked. I mean, is there any kind of a selection process for which one?
Well. Technically, you can pick all three. So, yeah, so I mean, you, you can recommend all three and then allow city council to confirm or appoint one of the three that you recommended.
Copy that. So I'll, I'll vote yes for Rick. I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
So we have, Dennis, are you voting? Did you vote?
Muted.
You're on mute. Hold on just a moment.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
I vote yes.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will be recommending Rick Stevens for the at-large position on planning and zoning. City council must confirm the appointment. We'll move on to the next discussion item. The next discussion item is. Deborah Durden for the position of P and Z. I need a motion to discuss. Ms. Durden.
I'll make a, I'll move that we discuss this.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, members made debate, discuss. Same thing.
Yeah.
So.
I think, David, from my point of view, having looked at their applications, that I'm supportive of anybody wanting to participate, and then the city council can sort it out, so. Well, I mean, you know, I don't know how to say no to one of the three, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I mean, technically, the qualifications for the at-large position are not necessarily the same type of qualifications for the ward positions.
Right.
So, you know, architects, engineers, design professionals, people in the construction industry, business, business owners and things like that. Okay, so we'll just go with the question is on, on the motion to recommend Deborah Durden for at-large position on the planning and zoning. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. We will be recommending Deborah Durden for at-large position on the planning and zoning commission. City council must confirm the appointment. So we'll move on to the next discussion item. I need a motion for the discussion of Lucy Escavado for the at-large position on the planning and zoning department.
So move.
We need a motion.
I'll second.
Ross second. The question is on the motion to recommend Lucy Escavado for at-large position for the planning and zoning commission. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. The, the ayes have it and the motion, the motion is adopted. We will be recommending Lucy Escavado for the position at large in planning and zoning commission. City council must confirm the appointment. So we can move on to public hearings. Public hearings is to obtain citizen views and comments concerning a special use permit application for the establishment. We call alcohol drive-through store, property is located at 300 South Cockrell Street. Legal description is lot 1 through 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10, block 35 subdivision Hancock. Owner of the, owner of the record is Ryan and Skeleton, Skeleton, excuse me. So we don't do any motions or anything like that during the public hearing. This gives us time for any public. Any public, member of the public can comment. It's just kind of an open discussion as far as what type of business and hours and things like that. So I didn't really write a brief like I normally do on this. I may have sent something off previously. I don't know if you received it. We're kind of changing up P and Z a little bit. So it should get back to normal this next P and Z. But for the most part, this is going to be a wine and beer for retail permit. And it's going through SUP. This is considered a BG permit for TABC. What, what that means basically is the holder can sell for consumption beer, ale and malt, liquor, and why not more than 14% or 17% by alcohol. Volume on or on premise where the product is sold. Products can, can't be sold for resale. And then the permit requires adequate seating area for customers. Now, that, if they decide to change this to a different type of TABC permit, they'll notify our departments. And basically we'll send that information out. But the BG and the BQ permits and all that are kind of similar. For TABC, there's a little difference in the rules and regulations. But for the most part, if they do have alcohol sales on premise and off premise, then this is where this BG license comes into effect. And I believe that's what they're going to actually, what they've applied for through TABC. The hours of operation are stated in the brief, as, and I don't know if everyone's read the brief that they submitted. But if any, if there's any conflicting hours in operation, or if they change those hours, it always comes back to our department. And we, we reattach it to another form of this, their certificate of occupancy, and we change those hours. But they have to amend, if, if they go beyond the hours that it states on their certificate of occupancy or what we approved through P and Z and city council. Then they'll have to amend their SUP, their special use permit, and then they'll go back to the planning and zoning commission. So if they decide to sell alcohol extended hours, they'll have to apply through TABC for that additional permit. And then they'll have to actually amend their SUP. So if, if there's any questions that you have related to any of the site plan, the building, or, or what's going on, let me know. Ask me now, and I'll try to answer any questions for you. And then if whatever we make, whatever recommendations you make at the planning and zoning commission or requirements, I'll go ahead and make notation of that so that we can send that to city council.
So apparently, we don't have anyone appearing to speak in favor of or against this tonight? That's when that, that would happen, correct?
Yeah, well, who's ever developed it, they, most of the, most of it is, is they can present at P and Z. Now's the opportunity through this discussion time. Maria Skeleton is here. If she would like to comment, she has the opportunity to comment now.
Hi, how are you? How's everybody?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
So what we're. My gosh. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's getting a bunch of feedback, but what we're trying to do is create a drive-through. Over there located next to Jacksonfield, so it's 300 South Cockrell. The difference between this store and your regular convenience store is that you can actually drive your whole vehicle inside the store. As some of the attendants walk alongside you, you don't ever have to leave your vehicle. You can look at the merchandise on both sides of your vehicle, and we think it's in a great spot. We think it's going to bring some money back into the Alpine economy, and we're just, we're hoping to, you know, get past this planning and zoning commission.
So there's actually, the, the cells are going to be beer and wine only, correct?
So there is going to be a mixture of non-alcoholic and alcoholic beverages, but yes, it'll be like wine-based. So we'll have a margarita machine, maybe some like pina coladas, but there, it's not going to be past the percentage to, for hard liquor.
Okay, and do you plan on on-premise, this consumption as well?
So the, the license that we are applying for with TABC, it is on and off premise.
Okay. So one of the questions that came up previously was, it really had to relate to how clean the areas and what type of. Flatwork or off-street parking that you're going to have. And most of that you've already submitted to the, the building services department through plan review. Most of it is either concrete or asphalt. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's going to be, we're going to try to keep it as clean and landscaped as we can. We want to do asphalt later eventually. If we can make some money, you know, we'd like to cement it all up, keep it clean. We plan to have some outlets for food trucks and put some benches out there, let people be able to, hopefully, when Saul Ross comes back into play, you know. Sit out there, enjoy baseball game and be some clean fun.
Well, one of the questions that normally comes up is the attached to your SUP or what you do as far as sales like food trucks and things like that. Through the Texas Department of Health Services, there are requirements for having some form of commissary or cantina attached to it. And, and then that part of it allows you to, to actually have the food trucks. But within your building, and, and one reason why I'm saying this is kind of just letting other P and Z members know of how your building is, is going to be built and what your concept is for your area, for your site. So you, as an owner, are also the commissary. You have a kitchen, a fully functional kitchen that can accommodate all of the requirements through Texas Department of Health Services for your food truck business. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct. Yes, sir. We're, we also are planning on doing the, like selling maybe some like grocery meats. So that was part of the requirements to have from the Texas Department of Health and Health Services. So we will have that certificate. We will have a functioning kitchen. We're hoping to maybe do some breakfast burritos in the morning, just a quick drive-through, get you some burritos and some coffee. So yes, sir, we will have a functioning kitchen to be able to attach for commissary for food trucks later on.
And then also too, you have multiple approaches, I believe, from different areas. We have an approach from the south, an approach from the west side of the site. So this is, so traffic control is being well thought out?
Yes.
On a civil, okay, so from a civil engineering standpoint.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other comments or recommendations?
So it's food, I have one, so it's, it's food and wine, beer, but what about gasoline? Is that on here? I don't see it.
No, ma'am. So what we wanted to do, we wanted to stay away from the gas services. What we're just trying to do is just a regular convenience store. You can drive in, there's going to be chips, there's going to be your regular grocery items that you can find. Of course, not as much as porters, but we do want to have, you know, the limited grocery items as well as anything else that a regular convenience store would have. In addition to alcohol and non-alcoholic beverages.
And, and am I understanding that, that you actually will drive? I'll drive my car through the store and ask an attendant, I want those Cheetos and I want those Servaisons.
Yes, that is right.
That's the way it works.
Your whole vehicle through, we have a, a pretty. Pretty big system that we're thinking about, that would be able to allow the attendant to walk right next to you. Everything would be Bluetooth, and she would scan it in, hand it to you as you're walking along. It would allow you to pay right there with her, with her or him. And then you, or if you had cash, you would just go to the end of the, the carport area and just pay out there. So it's supposed to, you know, cater to the more fast-paced convenience lifestyle, so you don't have to get out of your vehicle.
Okay.
Are there any other public comments, other public comments?
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
I know that they have a, I think it's a, what is it, 5 o'clock drive-through in Fort Stockton, and it's the best. I love it. You don't have to get down, you just drive up, get whatever you want, and it's on both sides. If they don't have something on one side, have it on the other side, they walk up to you, give it to you, and you're out. I mean.
Yes, that was where, that's where the idea really came from, was those facilities in Fort Stockton, they have two of them, drive-through convenience stores. The only difference that we are going to have is that both sides are going to mirror. So you're going to have the same things on both sides, whether you're going southbound or northbound, and so you'll see the same, same products. But yes, I'm sorry. Oh, and we are planning on hyping up the flavored tea, just like they have in Fort Stockton. I know people sit, they in line waiting for tea. So yes, that's what we're hoping to bring to Alpine.
Great.
Is that a loaded tea? They consider that?
Uh, no, no, not loaded as an alcoholic beverage, but you can load it with different types of flavors.
No, it's just like, it's just like the one they do at Amurgo, they do a loaded tea. I just wondered if it was close to that.
Oh, I want, I've never been there, but I have heard that they do like different types of flavoring, depending on what you want. And so that's what we're, that's what we're looking at doing is doing your regular sweet and unsweet with having different flavor shots. So you can have peach tea or diet green tea or whatever it is. That's the hope anyway.
Cool, cool. I do have one question per the letter that was received from a. Neighboring to this property. On your entrances and exits especially, are you considering making sure that whoever pulls out at any time has full access to seen roads on all directions? Because this is kind of a, you know, problem.
Turn. Right, so the, the first entryway lands on Cockrell Avenue. There was already an existing entrance to that area, and so we do plan on using that entrance as one of them, the southbound one. And so the other entrance, it's going to be closer, what is that avenue? Um, I think, I think it's Avenue G, but it's going to be right along that. There, there's a brick building right there. It's already an existing road. There is an existing entrance in and out. And so we are going to make sure that we have, you know, safety. Walls and safety gates up to help keep the traffic. to help keep the traffic flowing solely inside that lane um, in and out. So they're coming onto existing roads already, so we don't see any issues there, but.
I have a question. What hours of operation were you looking at?
Um, so I I believe, I believe what was submitted was um. Mr. Hill, do you happen to have that?
Okay, I'll get it for you in just a second. I have uh.
If I can remember what we submitted, I wanna say that the hours of operation would be like um, Monday through Thursday, um, seven. Seven, six, six A M. to ten P M. And then Friday and Saturday is where we would extend the hours a little bit to twelve o'clock. Um, Sundays, we would not open until noon and close at six. So we feel like they're conservative hours. Um, we're, we wanna be, you know, respectful for the residents that are around. We're not planning on playing any loud music or, you know, we're, we're trying to make this a respectable business.
Oh, I agree, and I appreciate the the uh, hours on the weekends. I think that'll be awesome for the football games and all that. I too agree with Lucy. I think this this will be something good for Alpine. Uh, I for one, there are many times I don't wanna get down, so it'll be awesome to be able to just pull in and grab bread or a gallon of milk and not to mention breakfast burritos. Best of luck.
Thank you.
So the hours of operation that you submitted were Monday through Thursday, seven A M. to ten P M. Uh, Friday and Saturday, seven A M. to twelve A M. And then Sunday, twelve P M. to six P M.
Thank you.
And those, those actually correspond with T A B C regulations for your specific permit.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, you know, stay late hours. We're not a bar. We're just a drive-through convenience store. If you wanna come and get chips, late hours, come on by. But we're not a bar, we're not planning on staying out there late, and so wanna make sure that's, you know, out to the public.
And the food, the food truck hours would be quite similar to the hours that for your opening and closing as well. So those could change, those could change uh, in the future, but those will be updated and also the meetings will be published as well.
Yes.
But any other comments?
I think Ms. Foster's trying to say something.
Let me, let me see what we get on, or we can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Um, can you hear me at all?
Now we can.
Okay, um, we live across the street, three oh five South Cockrell. So when we open the curtains of our living room, we will be looking directly at this building. And so at this business, I just want you to be cognizant that this is our home. We've lived here for twenty-three years and looking at this kind of business may not be what I had in mind when I purchased my home. However, so some things I'm concerned about are light pollution, um, the noise, the traffic. Um, specifically, my husband wrote a letter about the traffic, and when she talked about Marisol, when you talked about the the entrance from coming up from the south going towards the north, that driveway happens to be where the eighteen-wheeler truck ran into the neighbor's tree and almost their house just like two or three days ago. So we've seen lots of wrecks around on our property too, in particular, and then several others in that, at that intersection. So um, I know that you really wanna do this. I'm just concerned about some of those things. The trash, pick up, the wind blows, we get everybody's trash in our yard.
Right.
It just makes it really um. As you think about how you're going to do this, think about if you would wanna live next door to it or across the street. Would you want this coming in to your neighborhood? And I know we live in a, in a commercial area, but um, it can be done nicely and those things can be minimized so that it's not.
Right. But that, that is something that we did put some, some thought in because um, obviously, we do wanna respect the residents that are living in that area. Um, when looking at that, that wreck that happened today or just a few days ago, you know, that eighteen-wheeler, he really did. He didn't have anywhere else to go but to turn, but to hit that tree. Um, and so with our facility, it's gonna force him to go inside our, our, I don't know, we have some safety lines and safety borders up that it's gonna allow him to go through there in a safe manner. He's not gonna be taking big U-turns, he's not gonna be taking, you know, extreme turns. It's a, it's a very easy flow the way we have it laid out right now. Um, so it's an easy entrance and it's gonna allow him to go through the building and out a whole different way. So he's going to miss that whole curve. Um, so hopefully that helps. We won't know it until, you know, it happens. The way the building is planned to sit right now, we've made it in a way to turn it. So that way, if there is some light, it's obviously not gonna be going into your living room uh, window. You know, we've, we've tried to be cognate of that, and we're trying to be very respectful in it. We both wanna have, you know, a clean facility, and we're hoping that we can bring that with that in mind.
Right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have y'all looked at the uh, the dark skies ordinance as far as your plans for lighting for the the store?
Yes, we have. Uh, we have looked at all those things, and you know, this is something that we've also considered with like the Saul Ross football games, you know, it would be less or the same as um, the headlights that they have for football games. It would be the same amount of traffic, it would be. I don't know, we, we have looked at the, that ordinance for the dark skies, though.
Okay, so.
Most of, uh, all of the photometrics, the lighting for that facility, for that building and the site itself would fall under the new proposed dark skies uh, ordinance. So that includes full shielding and light trespass. So that during the process, Dennis, when, when they get to the end of their process, they actually have what, what? They've always had before, which is called a photometric study. And what that is, is basically an electrician who's uh, in charge of the project will come and do a meter of equivalent of a measurement of the light itself and then submit that to our department. If it meets those standards, then we approve it. If there's anything that's needs to be corrected, then we notify the owner of the design professional.
And you use the term light trespass so that the neighbors across the street, the, the light should not be crossing onto their property, is that correct?
Correct. It'll be, it'll be directly on the, the building side, the building itself, the property. So there is no trespassing in that sense. Now, you may see the light from the street, but it's not gonna trespass uh, in into your property area or the light of way.
Okay.
So if there, if there's no other, no other comments, discussions? Is there any recommendations, requirements uh, that P N Z are, should we go ahead on to the action item?
And under action items, we get to discuss what we think about it or our questions, correct?
Well, the action items, I mean, we can have further discussion on it. Um, yes, that's part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, actually, we'll move on to the action item to discuss, consider making recommendations to the city council considering a special use permit application for the establishment of a retail alcohol drive-through store. Property is located uh, three hundred South Cockrell Street. Legal description is lot one through five, six, seven, eight, and ten. Uh, block thirty-five subdivision Hancock. Need a motion to take action on uh, discussion and considering recommendations to city council. I get a motion.
I move that we discuss the recommendation of city council for this property.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, members may debate. Sorry, I didn't restate the motion. Let me restate the motion. Uh, motions uh, to uh, discuss, make recommendations to city council for the special use permit application. What did you have on the discussion item, Dennis?
Um, first, what, what is the existing zoning for, for the property?
Uh, the existing zoning currently right now, and I just had that up. Bear with me one moment. Let's see, one zone, C one. And it's in the zone X, so that FEMA zone X. So it's not within the one hundred year floodplain.
Okay. But, but C one is the correct zoning for a small business like this, is it not?
It is. It falls under the C one zone, the district.
Okay.
So the only, the only reason that they're in for S U P right now is for the alcohol sales. And part of it has to do with hours of operation, T A B C, and then part of the food trucks. Everything else, they, if they didn't have the, that part of uh, what they're gonna do in the business, then they wouldn't need to come through the S U P. And they would be automatically uh, approved through the C one district.
Okay. Does anybody know what the speed limit on Highway one eighteen through that curve is?
I think it's thirty.
I think it's thirty.
Okay, so still city um, city speed limit. It does, it gets a little higher up that hill just to the south, I think.
Yeah. I think it's thirty when you come over the hill headed north. I'm pretty sure.
And I think the state can, can consider lowering it if it looks like traffic's gonna get ridiculous over there also.
Yeah, cuz we know we were concerned that the traffic was gonna increase over the hill because of that new apartment complex. Which is, I would guess, half a mile south of this proposal.
Uh, approximately.
Yeah.
Right across from Blue Water, so.
Right. But I would, I would think that's far enough apart that they won't, hopefully won't interfere with each other.
Um, we haven't got, received any complaint yet on anything from the apartment, so um, you know, knowing that I'm with the management company. So I think so far, we're doing good, and there's been a lot of traffic on that road coming in and out of there.
Okay. The other concern, I'm not sure this is the right word to use, but is we have recently approved the food bank's new building, which is maybe one block east of this proposal. Am I seeing that properly on a map?
Yes, that's where it is.
Which is gonna increase traffic at times during, during their open hours. But I think that, that they're fairly limited in the hours that they're open. Anybody? Okay. So hopefully, that's not gonna interfere with, with uh, traffic interactively too much either. Cuz that building is, is coming along. It's, they're probably gonna be moving into that, I would hope, within the next two to three months.
Well, that's kinda good, then maybe both constructions won't be going on at the same time, so.
Yeah.
We'll break right through there. I think it'll be a benefit for anybody coming through Alpine going south county. I think it'll be a big boost. Really.
Am I allowed to say something?
Uh, no, actually not. Um, but I think part, I think one of the things is during, during the planner view process, through the international building codes and all the other I D, all the international codes that we've adopted as a city. We cover most of everything during these developments of these buildings, the site, the site plans and all that. Uh, for the most part, when it comes to alcoholic beverages, we work hand-in-hand with T A B C and Texas Department of Health Services for any type of food uh, requirements or sanitation. So most of the questions that, that came up previously had to do with uh, hours of operation, uh, trash, uh, noise, nuisance, and things like that. So technically, if we don't, if we're happy with the hours of operation, and they, and they've been working with our department uh, very closely. So, and they've been very open to suggestions and and comments from what, and we sent out the planner notes and they uh, all responded to those accordingly. So if we, if we feel like there's something that we need to make some form of requirement for uh, hours of operation or something like that, then we can make that recommendation uh, for city council. But right now, uh, they've met all the minimum qualifications for the International Building Code uh, site development and uh, all the nuisance and the, the regular ordinances that the city's adopted so far.
I, I do think that it's important to note the, the family that sent the letter in objection, which I think is the same family that, that spoke to us here a few minutes ago. Um, and that, that as they're making decisions about putting the business in place, that they need to be considerate of those concerns, uh, lighting, noise. And and how the traffic flow is designed was what I heard, heard the objections being. And uh, that, that their lifestyle in the adjacent residential area not be disturbed.
Uh, part of, part of all of the ordinances that have been adopted, uh, the city's adopted, that are enforced through uh, P D and also through the code compliance department as well. So any type of complaints would be directed straight, uh, straight to P D or code compliance. So they, actually, they, that, that's how we go through the enforcement process and also any citations or anything that comes up in the future. So we, if they, if they don't follow those, if we don't make any restrictions now and they follow their I D C and the, and the regular ordinances, and they, and they don't go into violation, they're good. If they do, then we'll just go take them through the same enforcement uh, process as anyone else.
Okay. And, and can these permits be revoked if they're, if they became a problem from, on the, the view of the neighbors?
Well, the permits can be revoked if they, if, if they've done something, um, cuz they usually have state health inspections. T A B C comes out twice a year, uh, they look at their receipts, their records, uh, any type of violation like that. Any type of building or uh, side violation, their permits can be revoked or they can be, there can be a stop order put on them until they make that correction. So usually, it's something that they're unaware of. Uh, or they, uh, maybe someone has uh, sold to an underage, underage person and they, then T A B C comes in and does an investigation or something like that.
And I, I kinda echo and concur what Dennis said. I think with it being C one, um, they've done a real thoughtful job with what they're gonna do. It seems sensitive to the adjacent neighbors' issues. Um, you know, so I, I think is, it, it probably is a benefit for Alpine and, you know, it is a change for the neighbors, but, but it seems like they're gonna work with them as best they can, all things considered, and um, you know, I, I concur with Dennis.
Okay, if there's no recommendations or requirements that we set forth for uh, city council, I need a motion to take action on, yeah, to recommend to city council, consider a special use permit application for the establishment of a retail alcohol drive-through store. application for the establishment of a retail alcohol drive-through store. Property located at three hundred South Cockrell Street. Legal description is lot one, three, five, six, seven, eight, and ten. Uh, block thirty-five subdivision Hancock. Question, in motion to recommend this. Those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, those in favors, are those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. I will be recommending special use permit um, to city council, uh, considering a special use permit application. There you go. I request to adjourn the meeting if there's not, nothing further.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Good job, David.
Okay, well, thanks, thank you. Sorry for the slowness of it all.
No.
No, it's all good. It's all good. Thank you.
And I appreciate everybody being here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
All right, bye-bye.
Dennis adjourned.